Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hammuss.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, before we begin, I wanted to welcome everyone who's come tonight. We all understand why everyone is here, that there is an issue that's very concerning to many citizens in the community about the impact of a proposed development on the eastern edge of our city. Many of you have been to the meetings that the supervisors have held regarding this issue. Those meetings are essentially being held because, at this point in time, it is their issue. It is in their jurisdiction, and it is not something that has come to the city. We haven't had any dialogue with the developers. We haven't had any interaction to this. We had no more knowledge about the project than anyone else here. But I understand from a lot of the communications that have been going around is your interests tonight are to determine if there are some remedies that the city could have in terms of getting engaged in this, and we want to talk about those tonight. Our city attorney, John Morrissey, is here to talk about a couple of those different areas. But before we start, we are going to just run through a couple of different items, and then we will have a public forum for appearances before the council. Generally, when we have this section, someone has indicated that they would like to make a point to the council. We allow three to five minutes for that. It's generally something that we don't take action on. It's something that we're hearing for the very first time. We don't have that subject matter on our agenda, so there isn't any action that we can take on that. So what would likely happen is that there would be something either moved to one of the council committees or something that would be discussed at a later date. So there are two people that are on the agenda right now to make a petition, although Marcia Hansen did say "and friends." So we will -- and to be fair, you know, we want there to be, you know, a fair sense of hearing about this, so I will allow for several other comments. But again, I just want to make the point that this is not a public hearing on an issue at this point in time that we have any decision-making power on. If it were, then everyone would have their opportunity to speak. But because this is something that we use as an opportunity to hear from the public, we'll hear a little bit more. We'll have an explanation from our city attorney about what steps the city can and can't take, and then we'll move on with our meeting. So we'll start with our -- first of all, counsel, any additions to this evening's very long agenda? Okay, we'll move then to our consent agenda. In it, we have approval of minutes from the March 24 meeting, April 9 special counsel meeting. We have a resolution for hiring a park and rec department employee, approval of liquor license for the Veterans Club, and approval of claims in the amount of $448,334.86.
Move for approval.
Second. Move by Revulinski, second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hammuss.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So our first appearance this evening is from Representatives of the Chamber of Commerce regarding our two citywide garage sales, and I see that Nancy Morrissey, our director, is here, and she can come up to the microphone.
She's making her way.
We, yeah, we forgot to reserve your parking space, Nancy. Thanks for coming.
That's okay. I'm parked around the corner down the road. Well, the Chamber has a garage sale every spring and every September, and it's the third Saturday in May. It's on May 17, and then again on Kiwanis Kids' Day Parade on September 20. And we have been able to kindly use the city parking lot south of the First National Bank parking lot, and that is our request. If we are able to use that again for an all-day event, we mark off the spots on Friday night, and then the garage sale starts right away at 8:00 AM.
Great, thanks, Nancy. This is obviously Fairfield tradition, so entertain a motion to approve the request to use the municipal lot for the citywide garage sales.
Move to approve.
Move by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pose the same sign?
Abstained, since I'm the current chamber board president.
Okay, thank you. Next counsel, I'd invite Paul Glossip to address counsel, and this is on an annexation request. Paul?
A 160-acre industrial complex on the east edge of Fairfield, hosting a 24-hour demons orchestra of grain dryers, and 14,000 semi-truck deliveries per year, their tires smashing our underbuilt roads at our cost, five new jobs, 40 lost jobs. We may approve of it, we may not, but do we want it just there? I think this situation, whether or not we end up with a new company on the edge of town, points up something even more important than our immediate health and safety, or the wear and tear on our streets and infrastructure. These things, the welfare of our town and the well-being of all of us, aren't just the result of individual situations like this one. They depend on the cumulative effect of this project and that of the combined results of dozens of projects, hundreds of municipal decisions, thousands of days of deliberations and choices, as the city makes its way into the future. The biggest changes aren't from individual projects, but from the gradual combination of projects and choices day after day. And the biggest danger to the future of Fairfield is that these gradual changes are not visible, they're not obvious. And all these small choices and policy decisions can take us so slowly to a future we never wanted, that when we look back, we realize we had never noticed what was happening, and we missed the chance to plot our course. So let's consider this proposal in the light of what comes with it in the long view of Fairfield. Let's not lose sight of the trends we may be setting, the sacrifice of land or clean air, or perhaps preferable opportunities for which one choice now may set the stage. What we decide today about one specific project, whether it's approved or not, opens the door for certain future projects, even when this decision is forgotten, and closes the door for others. We owe it to ourselves and to the coming generations to keep the best doors open and to avoid the gradual erosion of what makes the present Fairfield so unique and viable, so full of promise. Now, for details, Keith DeBoer, followed by Mark Cope.
Thank you, Paul. I too have a prepared statement, and it is brief.
Can people in the hallway hear you?
Yes.
No, they can't. There's about 30 people in there. No, there's probably 50. 50, take a bow.
I'll speak right into the mic. Heartland Co-op is a multimillion-dollar for-profit corporation, and it's planning to build a large-scale industrial complex on the edge of our city. It will be their largest out of 63 facilities and will serve up to 15 surrounding counties. Heartland has so far promised eight jobs and travel savings to our hard-working county farmers. In return, local government seems prepared to welcome Heartland Co-op with tax incentives, tax rebates, and other forms of corporate welfare. Local government has not done a thorough job and needs more due diligence on the potential short- and long-term damage that could result from this project and proposed county support of this company is nothing less than fiscal irresponsibility, in my opinion. Meanwhile, Heartland Co-op has consistently refused to provide vital information to the county supervisors and to concerned citizens and taxpayers who have requested information. Heartland Co-op has refused to provide drawings, dimensions, information on the proposed capacity, stages of development, data-based assurance for air quality control, regulation of noise levels from corn dryers, and, most importantly, traffic congestion and the degradation of city and county roads. Tens of thousands of 90,000-pound trucks will be entering our county from up to 15 surrounding counties, and Jefferson County taxpayers will bear the burden. Let me give you a few statistics in the areas of concern. Heartland Co-op will provide a mere eight jobs while negatively impacting the 20 employees at Reef Grain and the 30 employees at Overland Sheepskin. According to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, in the past four years, there have been 15 reports of Heartland Co-op grain elevators violating our state air quality standards. Two of their facilities have repeated and chronic violations. According to a U.S. government report, one fully-loaded semi-truck has the road-damaging effect of 9,600 cars. Heartland predicts that 18,000 semi-trucks from surrounding counties will be coming to Jefferson County and Fairfield each year. There will be as many as 200 trucks per day. This is the equivalent of 172 million cars per year that will be clogging and degrading our county and city roads. This will include Pleasant Plains, Brookville, Salinas, Osage, and Burlington Avenue as trucks come down Highway 1 to avoid the traffic jam at the railroad underpass on Nutmeg Avenue. The burden for the cost of this excessive and accelerated road damage will fall squarely on the shoulders of county and city taxpayers. Therefore, I implore our mayor and the members of this city council to exercise whatever authority they may have to require a thorough assessment of the potential damaging impact of this proposed industrial rail complex before issuing any government support, subsidies, or permissions. And I'd like to submit to the mayor and the council this petition signed by 1,200 individuals, residents of Jefferson County, imploring the mayor and the council to, as I said, make a complete review of this proposed project before accepting it in whatever capacity they have. Thank you.
That was done in five days.
Okay, thank you. Marcia, please refrain from speaking out. Thank you. I appreciate it. Mark, this is --
Go ahead.
Yeah. The other -- we always hope that there is an information that's repeated from one speaker to the other also, so Keith and Paul.
Mine will be very brief.
Okay, thanks.
I will reiterate what Paul mentioned. We have a course that we are deciding on, and that's large project by large project. I come from 16 generations of farmers. I understand an agricultural community. I grew up farming. I understand the needs, and I understand that it would be an access and a benefit to the agricultural community. Does not have to be within two miles of Fairfield. It can be relocated. There are other sites that are just as optimum as this was, intersecting Highway 34 and the railroad. Those sites are many miles away. There's one, for example, between Geneva and Batavia. That's the Elden Exit. It's a very -- it has every asset to a Heartland that this would have here. And to summarize, really, he's talking about two courses of action. We're talking about the blue zones. We're talking about the green communities. This is your binder about Fairfield. This was created. Now, we can do this, or we can do this. And how much will this, a 220-foot-high tower that's two blocks long, that makes noise all the time on the east end of town, impact all of the diversity of this community? That's really what I implore you to consider, and I understand that you said you have no remedy, legal remedy, and I think that will be discussed. There are legal remedies that you do have, and it does not necessarily have to be annexation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next would be Marcia Hansen, addressing the council on blue zone concerns.
Hi. A lot of what I have to say, other people have said, so I'll try to go through this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to start out and ask how many people in the room have read the mayor's from his blog, the 10-year strategic plan for Fairfield. It has 600 members of the community wrote this together, and they made a point of having people from all aspects of the community write this. And some of the things I've highlighted, they talk about harmony and respect, preserving small-town life, valuing richness of arts and recreation, valuing natural environment, valuing beautification. It really, I mean, I'm going to pass this around, and if you haven't seen it, I suggest everybody looks at this, because it's very uplifting to read this. But one of the main things they talk about is respecting your neighbor. And I don't feel that this project in any way is respecting our neighbor, and I don't see how we can treat one of our businesses and well-loved families like this. It seems that Fairfield's trying very hard to have a plan for responsible and urban-rural expansion, and somehow the county is not attuned to our vision of the future. And I wanted to know if the county only has a responsibility to the rural areas between cities, or if it really should be considering Fairfield as a subset of Jefferson County. Some say this project is about freedom. It's about freedom of living in a non-zoning area that supports individual rights to pursue their dreams unencumbered by regulations. I say this is not about freedom. It's about corporate greed and big corporate money destroying the Leahy family's life and their right to enjoy what they've spent over 40 years building. If we, after reading the strategic plan, go forward and support this project, we're giving up on each other. I don't see how we could possibly do it and look at ourselves. This company will be running roughshod over the salt-of-the-earth people in our community. Fairfield is at a huge crossroads, and we need to wake up to this. If the Hartford plan were that great, then why don't they share their internal market research with us? You know they've done it. Why don't they put it in black and white to the farmers if they're going to pay more than Reef can pay, and that they do have sustainable marketing and sales plans? It's because they can't. I urge that everyone who can take action does take action, and we make a responsible assessment of what this project is going to have in our future. Heartland's pushing really hard to push this through, and they're only talking about phase one. There's also phase two and phase three. They think that we haven't figured out yet what they're about to do, and they're just trying to get it done with as quickly as they can. I believe that they're going to have a monopoly on corn prices, and that when the day comes that they don't pay the farmers the extra 10 or 15 cents a bushel, they're still going to win, because they're going to have their sighting. I suggest we look at other options. So far, I haven't heard anyone entertain any other options. I'm not a professional, but I can come up with about 20 of them. One of them would be, if we did have a new location, I would suggest that we take the TIF money, which is $325,000 a year, and if they really need to build an underpass somewhere, use that money to build a new rail underpass in a location that's better sighted, because that's going to have to get rebuilt anyway, so why not do it proactively? And anyway, I suggest that we do, we make a decision that we won't regret and that we'll be proud of in the future.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. You know, if you wouldn't mind, at this time, I'd like to just give a little bit of information, because I had the same concerns as well when the, you know, the first information started to come out about the scope of this project and what it actually was, the heights of some of the buildings, things like that, because, as I said, that information hasn't been available to us, so I really did want to kind of get that firsthand. So I did have an opportunity to meet with their representative, Todd, this afternoon, and a few things were clarified. I'm not saying that they're going to make everybody happy, but I at least want to, for the record, get some of, just a few things out. First of all, phase one and phase two of the project are the essence of what the project is designed to be, and I'll talk about that in a second. And phase three is essentially some additional storage facilities. Phase one and two, which is planned to be developed by the fall of 2015, would be 4.4 million barrels of storage capacity on that site. It would include a main tower, which is 220 feet. That's the figure, that's the scary figure that people have been talking about for the past week or so. This is a steel tower, an apparatus with an arm that would then go from that point over the top of the storage bins. There would be one concrete main working house. That's 150 feet. We didn't get into exactly what is in that, but I guess I would understand that there would be the electronics for the elevator itself. There'll be eight steel bins. We've all seen the steel storage bins. They are large. They're 150 feet high by 78 feet. And phase three would be additional bins. Didn't talk about how much, but I would imagine that would be based on the success of their operation and whether they can really utilize 4.4 million bushels of capacity and going forward. They assured me that there would be no milling and no fertilizer operation. Their hours of operation would be 7:30 to 4:30 on a daily basis. We talked about noise. They did not have information on decibel levels handy, but that is something that I'm going to get from them very soon. We did talk about the character of the noise. The actual operation itself of machinery moving within the system would be some immediate noise. The dryers were something that I know I was very concerned about and did ask them about that. The dryers would be in operation for six weeks during the harvest time when they are drying. They would not be in operation any other time of the year. And, let's see, the rail spur that is being developed on the site would be able to have capacity to hold 110 cars. Their estimates are one train per week. Their operation is essentially to sell trainloads of grain. I think their most optimistic estimates for what they would be able to market would be one train per week. So a train would come off the line with an engine, go onto the site. They have 15 hours to fill that train by the railroad's specifications. They feel with the state-of-the-art capacity that they have, they would be able to do it in a much shorter period of time. They would serve a six-county area. I don't know where the number 15 is coming from. That's the first time I've heard that, but they did mention the six counties that they would be serving. Two of them would be to the north of us, which would be Washington and Keokuk County, and then the northern parts of Jefferson County, because, again, the road concerns that we would have would be mostly those that would come from the north, which is why there is proposed road development that would go east and south to that location. If those roads aren't developed, then we would likely see some of that traffic come through Route 1 through our city, which is something none of us would want to see since we worked so hard to have the bypass developed so that we would take trucks off of the road. One quarter to a third of the trucks would be delivering during harvest time, so the number of 14,000 to 18,000 trucks, a quarter to a third of those would be during the harvest season. The rest would be spread out during that time. Those are the notes that I made from today's meeting. I know there were probably a couple of other things that we talked about, but I did encourage them, as they, you know, proceed with this development, to at least notify the community clearly on the information about the project. They did, I asked also where similar-sized projects are already in operation. They mentioned one in McComb and one in Carlisle, Iowa. I happen to know the mayor of Carlisle, so I spoke with her this afternoon. That facility is actually a little larger. It's a 5-million-capacity storage. It's also on a rail spur. They are, that operation, she believes, is somewhere about the same, about three miles from the center of town. To date, and I, she didn't know exactly how long it had been there. It's been there for some time, but they did not, she did not mention that they had received complaints about nuisance in their city. Now, Carlisle is much smaller, it's much spread out, it's not as concentrated a city as we are. But I tend to, intend to go up and see what the facilities look like as well, to get an idea of what it is that's being developed. But I did at least want to share that, and I hope that Heartland will follow with our media and get more information out, as Marcia has indicated as well. You know, at this time, I'd like to invite John Morrissey, our city attorney, to talk about, you know, one of the remedies that's been talked about. Cities have the capacity to take some zoning control over what's referred to as the extraterritorial area surrounding the city. So our municipal boundaries, if you look at our map over here, those are our municipal boundaries there. Two miles anywhere outside of that, we have the authority to zone. The county supervisors right now have a subdivision ordinance. If a subdivision comes before the county and it is within that two-mile zone, in fact, we have one on the agenda tonight for approval, it will go through their processes first. It will be reviewed by our planning and zoning department. We will sign off on that subdivision based on the size of the roads, so that if, and other elements, so that if it were ever to be, become part of the city, it is prepared in the same way that we would prepare one of our subdivisions. But John, would you also explain the other zoning authority that we would have within a two-mile radius and how we would accomplish that?
Right. County subdivision rules and city subdivision rules are separate entity from city zoning and county zoning, and it's separate in the extent that county zoning or city zoning regulates use versus things like infrastructure, streets, lighting, and things that you would expect to go along, be the amenities of an annexed development. The regulation of the use, however, depends entirely on how areas that you have jurisdiction over are intended for use. For instance, residential, commercial and business, manufacturing, agricultural, those are all zone characteristics of land use that we can have under a city ordinance as well as a county ordinance. What the mayor's talking about, though, is the fact that we've used an extraterritorial subdivision review process that complements the county for a number of years, and also helps us look at things that we might annex sometime, is a different ballgame from extraterritorial zoning. I've had the honor of being a city attorney since 1990. In 1995 and '96, I was also the county attorney, and back then, we had 1,000 people over at the high school show up and tell us they didn't want county zoning. I was one of the presenters, along with a man named Gary Bishop, who was our county engineer, that laid out a three-year booklet that was a county zoning ordinance that had been drafted by 10 county zoning commission members, plus a couple members of Board of Supervisors, county engineer, and they had input from other local engineers and other attorneys, members of the bar, and myself as county attorney. I also happen to be Fairfield city attorney. At that time, the county zoning proposals, which might well have been your answer, were soundly defeated. The Board of Supervisors disbanded the county zoning commission. Two of the three Board of Supervisors that were part of the group that helped orchestrate the ordinance were voted out of office. As far as the future of county zoning in this county, it's been one of those taboo words since that time. And it was a coalition of out-of-city and Farm Bureau and people that were very independent about their beliefs and the independent right to use their lands the way they wanted to, that defeated that county zoning process. A year later, 1997, it A year later, 1997, it came back. There's a provision in the state code that says that when a county declines to act in the realm of county zoning, that if a city feels its interests on its, what we call, well, it's the extraterritorial zoning area that the mayor's mentioned, when a city feels that that area needs to be regulated to some extent, it can look at extraterritorial zoning in the two-mile or less area surrounding its boundaries. And this, the statute calls it an urbanized area. It's defined by what's out there that hasn't already been spoken for. And one of the things we found in 1997, because I worked with the council and we spent about six months on this, we had hearings in here. We had so many people show up in opposition to it that literally all these council chairs were stacked with bumper-to-bumper people. The whole room was full of people in here. Everybody wanted to hear what was going on, and they got a chance to hear. But what happened at that time was, we looked at our, again, our urbanized area. What we found was, and it's still on the books, there's a part of the statutes that allows a farmer or a group of farmers to combine land totaling 300 acres, and they can have what they call an agricultural area. And you'll find, if you look at our urbanized area and the boundaries that surround the city of Fairfield, that we don't really have two miles. A lot of places, maybe we only have a half mile. Then we have other places where we share an urbanized area with Vatic City up to the northwest. And so, there are places where this is a half mile wide, there's places where this is a mile wide, and there's places where this is two miles wide. So, that's what we're talking about. It's irregular, and you can't necessarily project, you're going to be talking about two miles when you try to regulate this. But we looked at that back then. We had our hearings. The county partially adopted that, or, excuse me, the city partially adopted that ordinance. There's parts of it that have never been adopted yet. It was politically unpopular then. It was a situation where you had to appoint commissioners that lived in the urbanized area to add to the extraterritorial zoning commission, and then they had to meet with the in-town members of the commission and organize to have a new extraterritorial zoning map established and then published. So, there's some steps that have never happened. The ordinance itself has never been published. The map has never been done. The commissioners have never been appointed, and things that you would expect to do as far as notice to surrounding people in the area and so forth have not happened. We're talking about something that happened 17 years ago. That's still a state of affairs for the city of Fairfield as far as this urbanized area. There isn't any ordinance that you can come ask us to enforce right now. We respect your right to petition. We understand what your petition says, but we don't have an ordinance that we can do anything about. To take up an ordinance again, we've got to go back, fill in 17 years, figure out what is good and bad about that. We don't know that there won't be the same kind of opposition to an ordinance. You folks are here on behalf of environment, on behalf of interests that have to do with a specific project, but you don't know what else is out there that may be in opposition to the whole concept of this type of zoning regulation. We encountered that in our last experience in considering this kind of legislation for a period of months, several council meetings, and it never finished the process. So, that's what I'm telling you first, is the status of extraterritorial zoning. There isn't an ordinance for extraterritorial zoning right now in the city of Fairfield or its ordinance book. Parts of this also that you need to understand is, even if we had one on the books, we can be trumped at any time, according to the state statute, by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. The county holds basically all the game balls on this as far as what can ultimately come into this urbanized two-mile area. If the county wants to opt to exercise some kind of special land use regulation on areas, they can do it by calling it a specialized, limited form of county zoning. And there were discussions about that back in 1997, that maybe that would be what happened next. However, the newly-elected Board of Supervisors at that time weren't going anywhere near the Z-word. It was not a word that they would consider. There were full-page ads in the paper about how important it was to defeat anything, if it quacked like a duck, if it walked like a duck. You can count on John Morrissey being a duck, I guess is what they amounted to back then. My middle name was Z. It was John Z. Morrissey for years. And I make that in jest to somewhat, but seriously, it's a very controversial issue as far as when you talk about land use regulation, whether it's countywide, or whether it's a two-mile strip, or whether it's something shorter than that as far as this urbanized area. So, if the county looks at your petition right now, they can do something. The county can probably act faster than the city because it's who this developer has gone to. Developer never brought anything to the city. The developer doesn't need to because the city doesn't have anything it can issue. We can't give the developer a permit. We don't have anything we can regulate them with, and essentially, it's back in the county's hands on things that the county can do to help them or to hinder them. The county could as easily pass something that would trump us if we do pick up the two-mile extraterritorial flag. So, we have to consider that every step of the way. We try to have a good working relationship with the county. I know the county attorney used to be an associate in my office, a good friend. I don't think we have enemies over there on the county side, but the other side of it is, this is a political football. This is a hard thing to accomplish, any movement towards the Z-word. As far as the city's side of this, if the city picks up where it left off 17 years ago, there's some voids to be filled. We don't know at this point, or we haven't done a recent study on what the urbanized area around our town even looks like compared to what it looked like in 1997. So, that piece of the puzzle, I'm sure it can be done with some engineering help, but it's still a project that won't happen tomorrow. And the process, if it had gone full span back in 1997, would have probably taken six to eight months to get an adopted, published map with a commission acting on the map and a commission then sitting down and drawing zones on the map. That's the regulatory function of a commission, once you get that far along. So, best-case scenario, if the council wanted to go that direction, it's one of their options, would be long-term. It's nothing that'll happen tomorrow. And then there's other things that you have to consider that have nothing to do with the fact that I'm telling you about an ordinance and the history of tracking some zoning attempts in the past. There's another thing that comes up under the U.S. Constitution, and that is that when you have something that's already started in the process, you have to deal with a part of our constitution that's called ex post facto. You don't pass laws about specific things after the fact. They haven't done that since we kicked England out. And basically, when you look at it as a situation about, can you do something with your current problem by legislating after the fact, you all know you wouldn't do that out of a sense of fairness. You all know that that's something that the party that you're doing it to would have a perfect right to go into court and have that type of process stopped. So, constitutionality is a big concern, and it's a concern as far as the way things time out here, too. Yes, sir?
Thank you. There is a law, there used to be a law called First in Line, First in Time, First in Line, in which a city proceeded, for example, if a hog confinement was going to be built after a community was in place and that community rejected that, that it couldn't be built.
Now, there used to be.
There used to be, and it was overturned by Farm Bureau.
Yeah, there's a matrix law now that basically is in the hand of supervisors to an extent and DNR to a greater extent. And essentially, I don't see anybody locating confinement facilities inside city limits.
I just use that as an example.
Yeah, I understand your example. I just think that getting close to the urbanized areas tends to test the water pretty strongly on those kinds of cases. But the matrices get watched closely. Our J-Fan group here in this county is pretty religious about watching the numbers on the matrix and holding the DNR to the ground, so to speak, on that.
Thanks, John. I think that's good thorough information for everyone to consider. At this point in time, I just want to ask the council, any responses to our presentations this evening and any of the options that have been laid out here? John?
I will see. And I sent some emails around yesterday about this extraterritorial zoning law. It's actually, my first city council meeting as Fairfield City Councilman was January 1997, and that's when that ordinance came for vote. I voted no at the time, and I forgot that, in fact, it had passed. But I think John's laid out a clear plan. If there was a will among the council right now to act on it, I think, I agree, it would take probably longer. And then, even if we did act, it would be perhaps, you know, a challenge in court, or, you know. So, I think it's very difficult for the city to actually do anything about this. We could, you know, maybe there's another angle that could be taken. I certainly sympathize with the Leahys. You know, if I lived on that end of town, I would be really upset if that was going to be built across the street from me. I completely understand. That's all I'll say. You know, I'm very sympathetic to this, but, you know, just looking, I think John's really summarized, and I spoke with him today about these things and pressed the issue as well. And I'm satisfied that he's laid out our, you know, the course of action we could take. I'm not sure that it would be effective in this case.
Again, we're not in a public hearing situation. We've had our presentations, so a little, little, little question? Okay, I'll take two, and then that'll be it. Go ahead, you were first. But I'll need you to come up to the podium, please.
Little question.
Beth Williams. After the Board of Supervisors meeting on Monday, the vice president that was there from the company, and Roger Leahy was talking to him, and I was there talking. And I asked him about the three plans because they weren't being mentioned, you know, the three phases.
Right.
All right, right now, it's just Phase One and Two, but Three can follow very fast.
But Three, again, Beth is just, it's in addition to...
I clarified with him, they can ship anything they want to, extractive building materials, gravel. They already are transshipping gas haul across the state, so they can develop the whole 180.
This isn't relevant to what we're discussing tonight, but that's fine.
Yeah, but he told me they will develop.
Thank you. Eva?
Come to the microphone, so that everybody in the back, speak directly into the microphone so everybody in the back can hear you.
My name is Eva Norlick-Smith. Terry and I talked with a person who used to supervise the roads in the city, and he has concerns, he asked to remain anonymous, but he has concerns about spillover traffic. The truck drivers who transport grains get paid per bushel, so they have an incentive to take the shortest path possible. And, for example, if you're coming from the west, going down South on Highway 34 is a big detour rather than going through the city. As Keith mentioned earlier, one semi-truck is the equivalent of about 5,000 cars on a state highway and 9,600 on a county road that's not built to sustain large traffic. So, one of the things the city could do, and which has been done in other cities, is to have ordinances for the kind of traffic that can go on city roads. It would be one way to ensure that taxpayers do not end up paying for the road maintenance for these extra trucks, and it would be one way of signaling where at least our priorities are as a community.
Okay. Thank you, Eva. I appreciate that. Well, I think, yeah, I think there are some effects that we should look at in terms of the impact on our road system. There's no question about it. I understand the design of the route to this facility. At this point in time, is taking into consideration alternative routes, but if, you know, if there are additional trucks coming through, obviously, you know, at one point in time, Highway One and Burlington Avenue, 34, were both state roads. That's no longer the case. We're maintaining Burlington, which then, you know, would be one of the direct routes out there unless someone made their way down to the bypass. All right, Roger, you'll be the last one.
We echo what John Revolinski said. We really appreciate Overland Outfitters and the Leahy family and everything that they've contributed to the economy of the community over 30 years, and we, you know, we really feel bad about the situation that your family and company are in at this time.
Oh, thank you, Ed. I just wanted to clarify a few points first. Well, secondly, I'm concerned about the city of Fairfield because I feel that area going out that direction is really the beautiful entrance to Fairfield, and we want to keep it beautiful. We kind of expected it to be agricultural for a long time. And it would be a great opportunity to make it even more, you know, to be a showcase for sustainability for this community, to have a green business, you know, park, to have, you know, green, have organic orchards and farms, and to really, and to also have perhaps a really great housing development that, you know, was affordable and real attractive neighborhoods and landscaping. And we would like to suggest that that would be a more appropriate use for the East Corridor into Fairfield. It's where people, you know, and right now, when you get off that exchange, the elevator's going to be right beside you there, and it's going to be the dominant part of the skyline, even if it's just 220 feet on the tower. By the way, when I was talking to Todd Phillips, the same person you talked with, this is almost, first of all, I asked him, did they have any similar facilities? He said, no, we never really built one this big. And then I said, do you have any, like, pictures or sketches? And he says, no, that was proprietary. And then I said, is there anything you can tell me? And this is a quote. He says, "There are going to be 220-foot-high concrete silos that are each 78 feet across, and there'll be eight of them in a row." Now, maybe he didn't know what it was going to be, but he certainly changed his story since when he told me, and I remember exactly what he said. And I said, and then I asked him about drying, and he said, yes, it'll be drying. And I said, is this going to be just a daytime operation, or will it be night and day? And he said, night and day. And so, he's changed his story on that since a week ago. So, I just want to point that out, that, and maybe the six weeks is where the exception is. Maybe it's night and day for just six weeks, but still, that's not just 7:30 to 4:30, which would be definitely an improvement. And I just wanted to mention, too, that, you know, one of the roads, too, that I've heard that would be a problem for this traffic study is people coming in Brookfield Road. And a lot, there's a lot of, you know, of this area comes up that way, and they're all going to come down to Burlington Avenue and right through town. So, I don't think we've addressed, you know, the traffic from that direction. Also, the issue of water supply, we tried to get, you know, when we built our building, we were not allowed to put fire hydrants in because there wasn't enough water pressure, we were told. And we recently, we were thinking about building an additional warehouse next door to our building, and we went to the city of Lockridge who controls that water main. It's Fairfield Water, but Lockridge has ownership of it. And they were real stingy. They said, well, you know, you could maybe put one hydrant in, but we'll only give you a four-inch tap, and that'd have to do for your sprinklers for two buildings. Then we got an engineer in, and they said, well, you know, you can't run a sprinkler system in this size building, which is dwarfed by the building next door, you know, with that water pressure. And in talking with you, you said you have no plans to provide services to this facility. I just wonder what they're going to, where they're going to get their water and their fire protection from. fire protection from. And also, the runoff, the streams right by this elevator, it drains right across our pasture, through two ponds that we have for swimming ponds and so forth, right down to this creek, and it's going to go into, right past, you know, the green area, the trail system out that way, you know, not through St. Tocco Park, but down, down that way in Lamson Woods. And, you know, the whole thing is just, I think, incompatible with where we want to go. And if there was anything we could do to make this happen, I mean, I think we could organ, even though it's, they've maybe, they bought the land now, they've spent maybe $2 million on land, I would like, we would like to come up with the $2 million to make them whole. If we could just, and I've heard also, this same person that was, you know, a road inspector, I think, for the state or something, that knows about the quality of roads and says that roads are pretty pathetic in Jefferson County. He also knows road, or people in the counties around, he says, like Keokuk County and other counties would be chomping at the bit to get this facility. And so it's not like they couldn't do the same thing someplace else. I would love to just even, I sent a nice letter to the Heartland CEO saying, we really don't want this here. It's not good for us, it's not good for Fairfield. You know, we would like to make you whole, we would like to make our community better. We don't want this to be a blight. This isn't economic development. This is, I've heard six jobs are providing, it's kind of ludicrous. And, I mean, we're attracting, the quality of our community is attracting people who want to live in Fairfield because it's Fairfield, not because, you know, they're going to go through this bridge and get off this interchange and have all these trucks here. It's just inappropriate. And I just hope that we could hold that vision and really grow together and make this a beautiful area and not, you know, not just have this, I don't know, it's just, it's very sad that that's where it's going to go, because I think a lot of people would think twice. And also, the drying, I mean, you can hear a dryer two miles up from a small farm operation, two miles up on Salina Road down at our place. So I can't imagine that this is going to be one of the biggest facilities in the state, that we aren't going to be able to hear that drying, you know, at the Fairfield High School or the city square. I think it's going to happen, and I think we're all going to regret it. And I, just to clarify this whole zoning thing, I realize it's problematic, it's, it could be cumbersome, et cetera, et cetera. But the city, there is a state law, the city does have the power to zone. I just want to make that clear to everybody. There's also a couple of other things the city, the city also has to approve the TIP, and if the county, you know, provides the TIP, the city has to approve it. So it can't proceed without city approval. And I realize that's, you know, you like to be nice to each other, and, but you still could stand up to them. And there's also, what Eva mentioned, I just want to mention, what Eva mentioned, too, you know, you could regulate the weight on roads. And so they can't go, you know, down Burlington Avenue, and then they couldn't come in, you know, whatever, on Brookfield Road and so forth. I mean, it could make it harder for them to achieve what they want to achieve. And, you know, so anyway, all those, this company has not provided any, anything to us. They've been extremely evasive. They haven't provided any environmental information, they provided no pictures of the facilities, no layouts, no, you know, when asked at the, at the supervisors' meeting, Becky Schmidt asked, supervisor, asked him, him meaning Todd Phillips, who's the executive vice president of Heartland, he said, she said, well, what, can you tell us about dust emissions or whatever from this facility? And he says, oh, we'll comply with regulations and we're a good neighbor. And then she asked him, what about the sound pollution? And, you know, and she said, same thing. Well, we're, you know, we're a good neighbor, you know? It wasn't any information. And even the information he has provided apparently changes from last week to this week. So I just don't think they are going to be a good citizen for this community. And we got to be very careful about what we're allowing in. I think that, and there was talk, I mean, they could be bringing in fertilizer, bringing in pesticides and herbicides and, you know, trainloads of them, and marking them out of that facility. And if, you know, it's going to come right through our pond if there's a spill. And Burlington Northern is not too great at spills. We had a, I don't know, not too many years back, we had all, we had one of our ponds stocked with, you know, with bass and carp, and like, we had 200 dead fish one day, you know? And they just probably threw out a, you know, a bale of, a bucket of something or other. And, I don't know, I just feel it's, it's going to come down through our parks, too. And so, anyway, I just, obviously, I'm affected, we're affected, but I think, you know, it'd be really nice to make that whole area. And if we could, I think we could organize financially so no one lost money in this thing. I'm not trying to stick it to anybody, I don't think you can, want to zone them after the fact, but I would like to help make this a win-win situation. And they could find a place that really loved to have a, you know, it could be truck stops and, you know, other, I mean, I don't see Fairfield as an industrial community. I see our strengths are in other areas. And this isn't an agricultural facility. This is a major industrial rail complex. This isn't a reef grain. And we, by the way, we got wind, we made an error on that picture thing, that somebody made an error on the size of the court, we've got an updated picture, and that's, well, now it's updated. The courthouse grew because, and we also have another pic, one that we weren't sure about the 150 feet, whether it was 150 or 220, and we have one that's 150. It still dwarfs, you know, it dwarfs our courthouse. But I challenge them, if they, you know, did they provide you any pictures that you could bring of what the thing's going to look like?
Not specific. I mean, I saw a couple of examples of similar, similar facilities. So I did see a tower, a concrete structure, and then a bin, a row of bins.
Yeah.
But it, so, yeah.
What's interesting, your note said they were going to be steel bins. He told me specifically, they're concrete silos, and they're, you know, and the overhead looks like there's 16 of them. There's two rows of eight.
Right.
And they stretch out for, you know, two blocks long, and they're going to be about 100 yards from my, I know, that's all. I appreciate your time.
Roger, thank you. We have a very long agenda, everyone has a lot to do. So I'm going to, we're going to close this session. I appreciate everybody's input this evening. And, no, I'm sorry, we're going to close it right now and move on with our meeting.
Thank you for receiving our input.
Roger. You're welcome. Roger, you know, I just, I just want to make the point, too, though, that your, you know, your suggestion about, you know, doing, doing something where you're potentially purchasing this property and coming up with another alternative is something that you're going to have to do one-on-one with them. So, you know, I would make that contact to see if there's any possibility of that in order to, in order to accommodate that. But we'll try, you know, continue to try and encourage information to come out on this, accurate information. I encourage the media to ask for this information accurately so they can get out to the community as well, so that we all know exactly what it is that we're dealing with. Thank you, everyone, for participating this evening. Next item on the agenda is Dave Neff. Is Dave Neff in the house?
Uh-uh. Uh-uh. There he is. If we, if people are leaving, if they could leave quietly, please, and then we'll just
continue with our meeting. Please, you're welcome to stay. Go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Joy, Kevin. Many times, all we hear are concerns about when things aren't being done the way they should be done, but I'd like to say thank you to the city. I'd like to say thank you to Joy, to Kevin, to all their staff, because you're the folks that keep the well-oiled engine moving. You're the ones that provide for the meetings. And many times, we don't take time to thank our librarian, Rebecca. Are you in here? She might not be here this evening, but she works at where we've been on sustainability, the progress that our library has made. Chief Harvey, thank you very much. The safety, security of our city is in her hands. Scott was here a moment ago. Scott Vaughn, our fire chief, protecting our property. Derek is here, and he's taken on major projects with the new pool and gym complex. It's never easy. You have to, have to be patient, and you have to be persevering in order to make these things happen. Sean Worley, are you in the building this evening?
No, Sean.
Okay, Sean's not here. You've got a brand-new sewer treatment plant. You've got brand-new sewage that's going to be transported over new pipes. And many times, we don't take time to think of all the effort that has gone in to make these things happen. I've been in Fairfield since 1965. This is one of the longest winters I can remember. Maybe I'm getting older than others or not.
You save the best for last, Darrell.
But we've got two folks over here, and we did, Virgil, you're over here, and Darrell, you're over here. I can't tell you how many times they've been out in the cold, pipes breaking, digging up the streets, digging up the other areas, cleaning the streets. And many times, we don't take time to say thank you. So I appreciate personally, and I think I'm speaking for the community on this, that what you folks do on a daily basis is part of your job, but we don't take time to appreciate it. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you, Dave. We really, really appreciate your recognition, and we echo that from the level of our administration also. Thank you very much, everyone. And Darrell, particularly, you know, great, great job this winter, really, really great job. Appreciate it. Okay, next council, we'll move to our resolutions and ordinances. First is authorizing an agreement for engineering services with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for the construction of our new airport terminal building. Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly is the company we've been working with for many, many years, has guided us through the construction of our new runway, and we're very excited about the prospects of the new terminal building. So, Robert?
Yes, Kyle Peabody's here tonight to represent CMT. And earlier, the Airport Board approved CMT for the engineering of the new terminal building, which we're really excited about. We're here to get the city's approval to go forward, and I sent everybody an agenda that Kyle has made up. He's here to answer any questions that we would like to ask him.
Thanks.
And thank you.
So we have a copy of the construction schedule, and I understand we will, we'll be going into the bid phase here right away?
Correct. The construction plan's been done since December of 2013. Basically, we did advanced plans, and we're just, now we're into the next phase where we just need to do the contract bidding documents, take a couple of weeks to get those ready, go out for a bid, have the plans out to bid for about four weeks. And then, after that, we'll apply for the FAA grant. Funding for this project is 90% federal funds and then 10% local on that side. So then, hopefully, start construction around mid-August. And it's 150 calendar-day contract for the contractor, and estimated to be done around January 2015.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions regarding the engineering services agreement? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, this is an agreement on, with Alliant Energy for municipal right-of-way tree removal. Michael, would you like to speak to that, please?
Sure. When Scott, Tim, and I attended an Emerald Ash Borer convention in Burlington, I was approached by a member, employee of Alliant Energy, who offered very generous service of removing ash trees that are interfering with their power lines at their own expense. As EAB continues to infest the trees in our city and kill them, it'll be a major expense of removal. And at this point, our Public Works has about $7,000 a year in tree removal in the budget. And the DNR, who's helping with, put together our urban trees plan, said it'll take over 20 years at that pace to get them all removed. And they'll be dead well before 20 years. So getting Alliant's help in this way is very helpful and saving taxpayers money. We just needed to make up a simple agreement. This is based on the agreement they make with property owners when they remove trees. We just tweaked it to suit the city. But basically, it says they will remove at their own cost, at no cost to the city, only those trees, the city trees on the right-of-way designated by our Public Works Director or his designee. And they will remove the brush, but they will leave the larger logs for the city to handle. And then also, we'll have to grind the stumps at some point. So we just want to get this passed so that Darrell can sign it and we'll have the agreement in place, because the crews are coming in only another two weeks or something, I think, they're going to start. Any questions?
Darrell, do we have a stump grinder?
Not yet.
Are we planning on getting, good?
We'll need one.
There's one in the budget? Is there one in the budget?
Probably a...
Not in the regular budget, but I think you can... Not in the regular budget?
We have some...
Is there a regular budget?
There is a potential...
The Parks and Rec Foundation might be...
Sale of Logan...
No, 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 no.
There does exist the potential that possibly in the future, there could exist a stump grinder, depending on how some of the things turn out, I think, within this year's budget term.
So they're going to come in and take down ash trees before they're infected, just because of ash trees?
Well...
Or they're going to wait till they're infected, then come back and take...
No, we're not going to wait to make sure they're infested, but, yeah. I mean, this, yeah, EAB has been traveling east to west for a number of years and has a 100% kill rate. So they're, you know, unless you're treating with chemicals, which we're not going to do because it's essentially a waste of money, they're going to die. So we don't like taking down trees prematurely, and we weren't going to until we had this offer made. And to take them up on the offer, yeah, the trees might come down a year or two earlier than what we would have done otherwise.
Since trees is dead, they'll probably just turn it back and leave it for us to take down.
Well, if you go to the city of Burlington, you see a lot of, they call it totem poles, you know, they've cut them as low as they can, but they don't, they don't have the funds to remove them and rest the way or replant. So we're working on a grant to replant every tree we take down, plus some. I mean, DNR says 1.2 trees planted for every tree removed, since the survival rate's not 100%. So we'll be replanning this fall in those locations that we're taking trees down. So I'll move to accept this.
Okay.
Second?
Move to accept the agreement with Alliant Energy for the tree removal and right-of-ways, second by Flornoy.
Just question, what percentage of our trees in the right-of-way are ash?
About 12%.
12%.
Yeah, that's lower than the state average, is 17.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thanks. Next council, we have two items which are essentially part of our compliance with our blue zone policy elements, and we wanted to get those before you this evening. The first one is a resolution for approving complete streets program and policy. And again, this is, in essence, setting a vision and an intention to, when we are developing new streets, to make them as pedestrian-friendly and comprehensive as possible, and where possible and when we can afford it. So, Michael, is there any other points you want to make on that?
Well, the point is, this looks familiar. It's because we did pass this already.
We did pass this.
But the blue zones standards are rather strict, and we had to reword both of these so that it says, now therefore be it resolved, the city council approves the attached, in this case, complete streets policy. We didn't, we did not, we had a resolution, but we did not have a policy. So the idea is that if all of us were replaced by other people, the policy would live on, so that it's more permanent than those of us who sit in these seats. So we've changed the language to policy on each of them, so that now we will actually get our credit towards our blue zone designation. But it's the same language as we passed last time.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Move by Revolinski to approve, second by Ledger Kalin. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. And then, in the same way, Michael, you want to introduce the...
Yeah, land use protection for farmers' markets and community gardens. We've already passed this. We just changed the language to make it a policy that we're now adopting. I'll move to approve.
Move by Hallie, second by Revolinski to approve the policy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Okay. Next council, we have documents that will allow us to circulate to potential buyers for the Logan Apartments. This was put together by our city attorney, John. Do you have anything that you'd comment on?
What you have is a fairly conventional offer to buy, a proposal for the buyer to plug in a figure as an offer. You accept it, then? The last three pages or so of this are an additional provision that is an outline of those things that you expect your buyer to agree to do in the course of operation as a new owner, to keep it qualified for rent subsidy. Basically, it's a Section 8 facility and a 202 facility, which is a HUD program that is expected to be qualified for specialized kinds of subsidies for seniors and for people that are challenged or disabled. So everything's there, I think, that is necessary to give your buyer the full understanding of what it is that they're buying and expected to do. My understanding is there are people interested in owning this kind of facility, and this has been sent along to a person that Kevin and I consulted with, Dustin Miller, and we haven't had any negative feedback on it yet, so I'm encouraging you to let this be the proposal that gets sent out to interested buyers.
And as soon as you approve it later this evening, we'll be sending it out, so we can get moving on this.
Do we need to change the names on the bottom of the form as far as the...
Yeah, the signatures, right. We can... John, as far as...
So I presume it will be advertised, then? They will, it will be advertised?
Kevin, if you'd like to address that.
Yes, it will be. It will be, I'm assuming we'll do a sealed bid type procedure with a date of opening of those bids, and the highest bidder would win. The only other documentation that I would think could be appropriate to send out would be that the city did acquisition and complete a commercial appraisal activity for Logan Apartments. Now, that ended up with Logan Apartments being estimated at around $1.9 million, as far as that commercial appraisal goes. I don't know if you want to touch on that, John, but...
I was, pardon me, I was just looking at our formatted names on there.
I was just talking about that we did have a commercial appraisal that came up with a $1.9 million appraisal. That would be really the only other thing that we could possibly include in a package, say we could digitize that and make that available to any potential bidder, that would be about the end of the...
I agree with that.
That's about all we have, otherwise.
Are we requiring a minimum bid in this, or not?
I don't think so. You know, if it's way off the chart, we're not required to accept any bid.
We're not required to accept any bid on this, right?
Exactly. You could deny all bids if you wish.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, is that, Kevin, is that something we're going to have prepared by the end of the week?
Yes, we certainly can. Depending on the action council night, we could have that ready to go out and have it out there by the end of the week.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the bid acceptance form.
I move.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
No.
No.
Salt.
Six, one. Next council, you have a resolution adopting nuisance abatement. There are probably less of a list than we generally have. There are seven property owners that have, for one reason or another, not completed payment for things like lawn mowing and snow shoveling. So entertain a motion to approve the nuisance abatement.
So...
Moved by Flornoy, second by Reverend Linsky. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council, we will be looking at the bids that were received earlier this week for the frontage road on Highway 1. First item that we will do, though, is to approve the plans and specifications in form of contract for the frontage road. So entertain a motion to approve the plans and specifications. Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Now Melanie from French Renniker will let us know how many bidders we had and what each of them bid, and who the winner is.
The bids were received on Thursday. We did, or the plans included alternates for a seven-inch concrete pavement or an eight-inch asphalt pavement to allow, I guess, equal competition between the two materials. We did have eight bids received. Many of them were from local contractors, so we appreciate the time that they spent on those. Your second and third pages in your packet are the bid summaries, and I'll read those for you. On alternate one, which again was the concrete pavement, the engineer's estimate was $383,000. The low bid was Drish Construction of Fairfield for $319,875.06. Then there were also bids received from Mike Nelson, Concrete Paving of Burlington, Iowa, for $323,539.17. JDM Contracting of West Point, Iowa, for $325,000. Wesley Barton Construction of Mount Pleasant, Iowa, for $364,139.47. Huer Construction of Muscatine for $366,393.08. They were accurate on this one. Shipley Contracting, the last was from Shipley Contracting of Burlington for $373,332.96. Then two bids were received for the asphalt paving. The engineer's estimate was $429,000. Norris submitted a bid for $373,172.43, and Huer of Muscatine submitted for $383,533.68. So we would recommend alternate one to Drish Construction at $319,875.56.
Thank you, Melanie.
I move to approve.
Are any of the contractors here this evening who submitted bids? If not, we'll, for the record, thank everyone who did submit bids. That sounds like we do have a motion by Hallie and a second by Flornoy, okay, to accept the bid by Drish Construction for alternate A and a total of $319,875.56. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamus?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Reverend Linsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council, we have approval of plans and specifications in form of contract for the skate park. Melanie, I'll invite you back up again, if that's okay. There have been some changes. The last time you saw this placement and design, it was at the Roosevelt Recreation Center site. After discussions with the donor and with some of the other planning that we have going on there at this point in time, we thought that Obi Nelson would be the better option for this. That was actually the donor's first preference. Now that we are going to be moving the outdoor pool to that area, Obi Nelson would be kind of wide open for something like this. Good proximity to the middle school and pants, and I think all around, and obviously our major playground, a good option. Go ahead, Melanie.
You pretty much summarized everything I needed to say. We are asking for the bids to be submitted a week from today at 4:00, but in addition to the bids, the bidder, the contractors, are going to submit a proposal that includes their project approach, experience and quality, demonstration and knowledge of the skate park, and then, of course, the cost. And so Derek and the mayor have worked on a committee that includes the mayor and Derek, as well as the donor and two users, to review the proposals. Basically, they're bidding on what I drew up, and I will admit, I have not a lot of knowledge when it comes to skate parks. So they are giving a proposal on what they see for this community, given the location and what they do know about the dynamics of the community, and so the committee will be looking at what they're proposing, what that company sees for the community.
Okay. Thanks, Melanie. Derek, is there anything that you can speak to regarding elements that are within the park itself, or...
Bowl-like feature.
Bowl-like, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm really relying on these designers to really kind of show us...
Show us what, okay.
Impress us, so...
Right.
Where will it be in the park? Isn't that obvious from the...
Sure.
That's just, just as you come in, John, the...
The parking lot is off to the right. It would be in the southwest corner of where you turn to go off towards the Wall Diamond Parking.
So John, essentially, if that one main softball field with fencing, it would probably just be in right center field. Just off of there. Thank you.
And we also now associated with these bids, we're looking at replacing the shelter that is in that area, if that can fit into the donor's budget, as well as talking to Musco about getting a light off of those existing poles that would face towards the skate park. If you choose to have a light at skate park, some of the designers said, you know, it's nice to just say the park closes at dark, but, so there are some good options with this site.
Great. Thank you, Melanie.
The park definitely closes at 10.
And it definitely, yes, yeah.
Melanie, I assume you guys are working with Derek and Pam Craft, because we're replanting out of Obi Nelson in April and May, replanting all the trees, because it's 75% ash out there.
Okay.
So as long as we work around whatever that you guys are doing.
You're replanting this April?
Yes.
Like in the next 15 days? Okay, we will work with them, definitely.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. So entertain a motion, then, to approve the plans and specifications?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Reverend Linsky. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council, we have, what I mentioned earlier, is approval of a subdivision plat in our extraterritorial zone. Kevin, would you mind speaking to this project?
Yes, Your Honor, basically. Well, it's a, it's a simple split, and we are electing to exercise our jurisdiction. Basically, we're saying we approve of this, and we advise a county to pass it such.
Okay. This has been approved by planning and zoning?
Indeed.
Okay. Any discussion, council? Not entertain a motion to approve the jurisdiction for the subdivisions plat approval in extraterritorial zone?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council's resolution essentially extending moratorium for our cell tower facilities permit, as you're aware. 2009, I believe it was, that we adopted a moratorium and a process for, for, within the city limits, for the construction of new cell towers. And John, is there anything that, did your committee is going to...
I think, actually, Michael, did you bring this? I had suggested it, and so Kevin, did you just, based on our...
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Basically, we had the moratorium on cell towers, and of course, we were going to look at some different planning aspects. We do have in our budget to do our comprehensive plan, which will be a lot of consideration about these types of facilities, we felt like in the city, and it was a good time to go ahead and extend that moratorium until such time as the city could take good consideration of the matter in subcommittee.
So it was set to expire on May of 2014, so we'll be extending it essentially another year.
400 days, to be specific, not later than June 30th of 2015, which by that time, if an ordinance, a planning ordinance, have not been created, the zoning ordinance regarding it, and perhaps the city would like to wait to a later time to include it in a more macro zoning ordinance that we were discussing earlier, that could be done as well, but in the very least, we'd have that moratorium in place till that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Move for approval?
Move by Reverend Linsky to extend the moratorium on the development of cell towers within the city through June of 2015. Second by Hamus. Any discussion? Not all those...
I would like to ask just a general question. At the time in 2009, when we enacted this, there was many people standing saying that they were going to leave the city if we didn't do this because of the cell tower that was erected at Whitney...
Depot.
The Depot area. I've never heard any data as to who left the community, who sold their homes, the businesses that were closed because of that, that kind of thing. I guess, you know, extending a moratorium for the moratorium's sake is not a good practice, and ordinance, if we're desiring one, needs to be worked on, and worked on now, is the point I'm trying to make.
That's a good point.
But, you know, we, I hear this all the time in emails and chatters, we don't want this here, and if it comes, it's going to make us sell our properties and we're leaving town. And I never hear anything after that, and several of the people that told me they were actually going to sell and leave were here tonight. They haven't sold, they haven't left. They, you know, it seems kind of hollow to me when it comes to that. So I think if we're going to do an ordinance, we should do an ordinance right now. We don't have anybody clamoring at our doorstep if we remove or allow the moratorium to lapse. I don't see somebody standing out in our lobby tomorrow morning saying, "I want to do this," you know?
But we could have it the next day, and then...
Well, I just, I think that we have to take a common sense look at some of these things, rather than just blanket statements saying, "Well, they're bad," you know? I think we really need to have something as an ordinance in a zoning manner for the city of Fairfield that concerns cell towers, and if we're going to do it, we do.
I agree with you, and I think since Kevin was saying that, you know, we're planning, we have been planning on doing this comprehensive look at zoning for the future, that this, it makes sense to extend it until it's done. Also, at the time, some time ago, twice, we actually passed an ordinance that required anyone who was intending to build a tower, such a tower to put down some kind of deposit, which would be used towards engineering to make sure that it's in the optimal location or, you know, at least half...
Did we actually pass those as...
Yeah, they were done, but they were, they both, they expired, and that's actually what I thought we were going to renew here, but this certainly satisfies me, this moratorium.
Well, I don't want, while, oh, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Well, you know, my, my thought was, and so it was passed again when Jeff was here, that it was, it's an ordinance, but it had, it was like good for a year or two years or something, and I was concerned that that time had run out. And at the time, my thought was, gee, we shouldn't pass this stuff for two years, this should just be our permanent ordinance, that if someone intends to build a tower, that we at least consider some kind of deposit so that we can properly vet the project and make sure, satisfy the community that it's appropriate, in an appropriate location. So, but this is, this satisfies my intention.
I mean, I also agree with Darren that I would have hoped that from the last time we put this moratorium in place, that the intention was that we would have been working on something that would be in place. We haven't, so I think that a year's time, whether it's through a comprehensive zoning plan or not, it should be done, and should be done right away.
It's been five years.
So we can...
Yeah, exactly. It's been five years.
Well, Your Honor, I would concur with all of those statements. I think it is something that should be done, and I don't want to be, you know, confused with the Storm Crow or say the barbarians at the gate, but I will say this, the most phone calls that, over the last year and two years almost, that I've been here over anything, inquiring about something of the city, was, "Where can I, do you have any property available for cell towers?" or thing, you know, statements like that. The companies are looking, and it's a time of great expansion in the business, I think, right now. So there is interest in the location of them, and that is one thing I would point, and it speaks to your point of really getting busy and putting something together, so, you know, those companies can deal with the city and the proper, and the community in a proper way, so.
Well, I think we were, I think we were probably working this through public safety at the time, so... Tony?
I think it's environment.
I would advise environment, yeah.
It was environment.
Maybe both. I would advise more than one subcommittee or a combination of two.
Because it's franchise utilities, and because it's a utility you're putting up.
Sure it's not property. This is a moratorium. If we have a policy before the 400 days is up, we cannot put one in place.
You could pull the moratorium at any time you wish, when you do come up with a policy.
Right.
All right.
All right, so you franchise utilities, then, if they would look into our options for just simply creating policy.
I think I moved, did I move?
Tony can sit in on those. What's that?
I was just verifying that I actually made a motion.
Right, you did motion. We do have a second. Yes? Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council is a resolution essentially pledging our participation in Jefferson County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation planning for 2015. You know, that was simply, we're agreeing that we would provide data for the planning effort, that we would help in the coordination of community meetings, assist in planning, creating a planning team. Chief, you want to speak to this, because I know we do have an active board at the city and county that is addressing this.
This is required by state law to be updated...
This is required by state law to be updated every 10 years. So we're in a window to update it. Hopefully, once they get a new EMS coordinator hired, he'll work on this project in addition to all the people that are on that board and work with all the department heads that have an active role in this and get their input so we get something, that we're not a cookie cutter off of, like Des Moines or something, because Des Moines' policy won't work in our rural area here. So we'll get an input from everybody. But I think that board will take an active role in having input in this and making it a viable document that we could actually use.
Great. Thank you, Chief. So again, an entertaining motion then to approve the resolution for our consent and participation in the process.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. The next council, we are going to be moving into Phase Two and Phase Three with Burbach Aquatics for the, what I would call, sort of the final designs for our proposed outdoor pool. And the action item that we need to take tonight is to approve the Phase Two and Phase Three. Again, this would be for the proposed pool that would be developed at the Roosevelt Recreation Center site for an estimated amount of $3.8 million. Again, this is a new design, so there is a lot of work to be done. All of the different elements of the basic design have been vetted by the committee, and I know we've seen presentations on this. But if we are going to get bids that we can respond to in a timely manner so that we can begin construction this year and be opening a pool for the early part of the season next year, we do need to empower them to go forward. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Burbach Aquatics to move forward on Phase Two and Phase Three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yep.
Was that done at the special meeting as far as agreeing to move that from the current location to Roosevelt location?
And you weren't available for that meeting?
No.
You know, what drove that, Tony, was really the economics of looking at what was realistic to put towards both of those projects after the county vote failed. And everyone kind of came up with a figure of $8.5 million towards both with $3.8 towards the pool. And that would still leave about $1.3 million that would need to be raised. Half of that, whatever portion of that we don't receive in a CAT grant would come through private. Those were the numbers people felt comfortable with. The other thing we learned about the Obi Nelson site, along with the most recent estimate for the size of pool that we had of like $4.3 million, was that there was about a half a million dollars in site preparation work. So that pool price breakdown was getting close to $5 million at that site. That's pretty much what drove the decision.
I don't like the location, but I understand it was already voted on change, so.
Yeah. Yeah. We would have been, I think everybody would have been happier. You know, and the other thing, too, as, you know, Derek had pointed out, because part of this came as a recommendation from him also, was that there are definitely economies there within the operations, and I think that's going to be important to Park and Recreation Department going forward. Any other discussion? Not police call the roll?
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hallie? Or, I'm sorry. Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next council, we have the authorization approval of the borrowing from the sewer revenue capital loan notes. Kevin, if you'd want to comment on those, please.
Yes, Melanie, would you like to have a couple of comments? I hate to interrupt.
Frequent flyer miles.
Tell us about how much zero interest money we're borrowing.
This is related to your SRF, by the way.
So, to review, in June 2013, you passed a resolution for, to take out the planning and design loans for the sewer project for a not-to-exceed amount of $3.8 million. And that was to include design fees for the conveyance improvements, design fees for the treatment plant and equalization, and the design fees that had already incurred for the hydraulic study. So after that, Allers and Cooney, bonding attorney, they processed one of the loans for the work that you had already incurred. What they did not do, and as we were starting drawdowns for this money, they did not process the loans for the other two. The reason that there are three different loans is because these loans get wrapped into construction loans, and because there is the treatment plant and the conveyance that are different schedules, that's why we broke them into the different loans. So basically, you're approving something you've already approved a month ago or a year ago. We're just formalizing the paperwork, kind of like the Blue Zone stuff.
Okay. And that goes for both? And why are we, why do we have the separate borrowing?
These loans get wrapped into the construction loans, and there's different construction schedules as to when you'll start incurring debt on these two different loans.
Oh, yeah, you're related to conveyance and facilities efforts.
Yes, I'm sorry. The first one is related to facility efforts, and the second one is related to conveyance efforts.
Okay. Thank you. So the first one would be for the amount of $1,585,000. So entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? Not police call the roll?
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the next resolution will be in support of the borrowing towards the conveyance system of $1,075,000 in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kalin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Next council, we have the first reading for the adoption of an ordinance to raise our rates for water. I know this has been discussed in committee. There are committee members, or Kevin would like to comment on...
Yes, Your Honor, this water rate increase would be for 12% to the water rate and would be in relation to a little over $6 million worth of capital improvements going forward. Darren, would you like to comment as well?
This was part of the comprehensive rate study that was performed by McClure Engineering for the city of Fairfield. At that time, we, at the beginning, we concentrated specifically on just the sewer portion because there was a more critical need for that. Currently, our water revenue stream only keeps us at a maintenance level. We have some new projects that need to be addressed.
I know we do. Carl, would you mind telling us some of the projects that you've got?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to share just briefly in the history. Years ago, we had a survey done as well. They stated, by Stanley Engineering, I believe it was, it stated that we should be investing a half a million dollars in our distribution system, that's the water towers, water mains, main improvements and main replacements, every year to try to keep our infrastructure as close to snuff as we could. Consequently, we haven't been able to do that due to restraints in monies and budgets and things like that. So we do have several areas of main in the town that are, well, a lot of them are considerably old, but areas, old or not, that are causing us many hours of repair, time and materials and manpower. And those are areas we try to target first in our main replacement efforts. We do have several of those areas in town, and in an attempt to complete and replace some of these mains, a little additional money is required. Also, a couple of years after I took over here, I did have the towers inspected inside, our clear wells inspected inside as well and cleaned. With that, the report come back that the inside of the towers did need repainted. So we have completed B Street Tower inside and out, in its entirety. The clear wells were cleaned and were in good shape, but the inside of the Grime Street Tower is also in need of repainting. So that was, in my budget process this last year, I'm speaking with Kevin, he instructed me to go ahead and figure in an appropriate or approximate rate increase. Consequently, I did figure in a 10% rate increase in my budget, hoping that it might pass through. That would also allow for an additional three blocks of main replacement, looking at the street on Washington between Sixth and Ninth Street. One homeowner approached me here a while back, brought in a sample of water that he's continuously getting, some yellow water in his neighborhood. It was promised years ago from my predecessor that it would be replaced, unbeknownst to me, but, so, and trying to, you know, keep an effort in those mains replaced and updated. I know there was at that time a small project run down half a block to appease one person there, so if we could do that whole stretch as well, and then also get the inside of Grime Street Tower repainted. And that would leave our towers in a wonderful condition for, you know, 10 to 15 more years to come. And the clear wells are in good condition. And just a continuing effort to try to replace some of these mains that have been troublesome to us, to where we're having five, six, and eight leaks in a block or two-block stretch. That's a lot of disturbance to the neighborhood, the folks, the sidewalks, front yards, driveways, those kind of things that we're continually having to go back and repair. And of course, this spring, we have quite a list of, go back and put the yard back and put the sidewalk and driveways back yet.
I was also going to ask you, do you have any rough estimate of the number of main breaks that you experienced just this past winter?
I gave that paper to you a while back.
You did.
I haven't updated it lately. I haven't updated it.
It goes to the point, it goes to the point that whether winter is mild or whether winter is hard, you have an average number of main breaks that you must deal with on an annual basis. In a harder winter, though, there are more of those that you experience. And the last two winters in a row, we've had fairly rough winters.
Yes.
And cold spells that went on for extended periods of times. And what happens is ground shifts, freezes thaws, and it will crack and break some of the weakest areas of mains. I know in my neighborhood alone, I've seen you guys out probably six times this winter. And by my neighborhood, I mean the area near Pence, the middle school, Fillmore, Liberty Drive, and along in that area. And some of that is some of the newer mains that are around, you know? Some are older, but, I mean, there is a necessity for this type of work to take place. And that three-block stretch of main that you said that has been problems, has been problems ever since I've been on the council more than 10 years.
Yes.
I think that in the way that we're doing this, we're just adjusting the rates. We're not adjusting what the monthly charge for a meter is out there. Those are going to stay unaffected. So...
And Darren, this is a 10%, did you say?
This is a 12%.
12%.
It would have been 10% had we done it at the time that we enacted the ordinance for increase of sewer rates, but it was felt by the committee at that time that that would be too much to apply at one point in time. And so we felt that we should slow down a little bit on the water portion of it. What happened is, is it increased by 2% the amount of money that it would take to do the projects that Carl was talking about because of the delay in time. And so that's why this number has been increased to 12%. The initial monies that were recommended by McClure were in the 15% range. So this is a lesser amount, but it's increased because of our unwillingness to want to try to do all of this all at one particular point in time. This way, it'll spread out increases over both of the systems in different areas.
And just so, you know, for the community, you know, to be aware, the water bill is just a portion of what we ordinarily call the water bill.
The utility.
The utility bill, which most of us call the water bill. And so your whole bill won't go up 12% from this ordinance, just that portion which pays for water itself, which tends to be maybe a third or so.
Yeah, about a third, roughly.
So it's 12% of a third of the bill will go up. So most people see maybe a 4% increase in their bill, in the utility bill overall, based on this ordinance.
Right.
Yes, and also important, Your Honor, to point out is the fact that, as Carl suggested, French Reniker had suggested 500,000 some years ago. There's quite a bit of statistical analysis that went into the formulation of these numbers. And when we came out with it, you're looking at not only operational but facilities improvements, as Carl's pointing out, the wide variance and variation in what those are, is also just the operational aspects of the system and the decrepit nature of much of the pipes under the ground, the conveyance being the biggest challenge, I think we thought, going forward over the next five to 10 years. But the recommendation, although we've talked a lot about sewer, the recommendation for water was actually 10 points higher over that same period of four years. It was 415s. Now, we backed off of that a little bit. Of course, we control what, as Darren's pointing out, we control what improvements we do and felt that it was important for our community that we did those improvements that we felt were absolutely necessary in the way that was not overburdening for our community. But the challenge is there, much as it is in the sewer system. I think that's important to know, of our community to know, and for us to point out as often as possible.
I think that's a good point, yeah.
And Darren, I don't know if this answers your question of a few months ago about the fund, but that would put me, like I say, the 500,000, that's going to put me closer to 400,000 in the distribution system. Still not to that 500,000 mark, but that would put us up closer to 400,000 each year that we could try to replace mains or make main improvements within the future. We've been working very diligently in-house to try to maintain and keep the plant up and running, but the mains need a little more attention than what we have manpower for.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Again, this first reading is a public hearing, so declare the public hearing open at this time if anyone has any public comments about water rate increases. No restrictions.
Ouch.
Ouch. Please note ouch as a public comment.
The water don't bother me, it's the sewer that bothers me. The Tampa water.
Thanks. If you'd like a comment on the water rate, yes.
I echo the ouch motion, but I think it makes sense not to hit the community all at once, especially with the hit that we've all taken economically since 2008, 2009. And it sure makes a lot more sense to do the water before you do the sewer. So I appreciate the counsel, your particular lead, Darren, your consideration of that, not wanting to hit the citizens all at once. So thank you.
Thanks, Hattigton. And again, for everyone to understand that, you know, these are utilities that we run operationally at near breakeven. These are not additional costs. These are essentially the costs that we need to service the utility and provide what it is that we pledged to provide. Any other comments at this time?
Well, I just wondered, hasn't the sewer...
Please come to the microphone. And if you give your name, this is recorded on TV, so we just, we like to have...
I'm Betsy Dockhorn, and I just, clarification, didn't the sewer rate already increase?
Oh, yeah.
The sewer rate, this is not concerning the sewer rate. This is the water rate, which is a separate line item on your bill, which you receive monthly. The money for the water goes specifically to the water and water distribution system. The money that was increased for the sewer went specifically for the sewer infrastructure transmission lines and the plant work that we have proposed.
His comment confused me. That's why I wanted the clarification. I thought he, so, that's all. Sewer's already been increased.
Yes.
Right, right. Sewer was increased six months ago, or will be six months ago at the time this is enacted, if it passed.
Then, Betsy, because we run a separate water treatment facility... Then, Betsy, because we, you know, we run a separate water treatment facility and a sewer treatment facility and a separate conveyance system for both, so they, they are, they are built both, they are connected in terms of how we build, the sewer is built based on your water usage, but they are separate operations.
Yeah, I looked very carefully at my bill.
I have a quick question. Marsha Hanson again. I'm from Ann Arbor, near Detroit, Michigan, and they purify all their water with ozone and found it to be a lot less expensive than using a lot of chemicals. And I'm just curious if that was ever looked at in terms of water purification for sewage or even for the swimming pools? It ends up that, you know, I'm just curious if that's been put into any of the analysis that's been done.
Well, currently, we have an existing plant that does two types of water purification, EDR, which is electronic system, electromagnetic, you run it through filters. Right, there. Anyway...
Electroreversal dialysis?
Electro dialysis reverse.
Okay. Not like reverse osmosis or anything.
The other, the other half of our plant, since we blend our water together, is filtered through a lime filtration system, which is an older, more tried and true type method of purification. The EDR portion of the plant was built probably...
2000.
2000?
2002.
2002. So, we're unique in the fact that we have switched some of our system over to a newer, more accepted method of purification. The EDR plant uses a lot more electricity than what the lime filtration did, but we get a larger capacity of filtration from the plant by use of that system.
Yeah, we've never had, we've never had better quality water and a more consistent quality water also, so big investment that was made fairly recently, and we're happy with that.
I was just wondering if you're at that point where that kind of a thing would be even considered if it was, since you were making big investments.
Well, these increases are to target the infrastructure that's out buried under the ground. It's, it's a lot like our sewer transmission system. Every house has a sewer line that comes out of it and goes into a main. Every house also has a water line that comes to it from a main. And we have to maintain the existing main that runs out in front of your house, the lateral that comes from where the shut-off valve is out in your front yard. From there up to the home is the homeowner's responsibility, but with people in town having, receiving rusty-colored water from their pipes is really unacceptable.
That's the main issue.
I mean, that is a main focus of the issue here.
Okay, I just didn't know if you're working at the treatment plant itself. I was just curious.
The work that we had been doing at the treatment plant was dredging of the one lime filtration pit, removing the material that has been deposited there for over many years, and trying to free it up so that we can have storage of that material once again. There are going to be a few lines that are being worked on coming away from the plant, but for the plant itself, it is structurally sound. Our forces have already revamped a couple of the lime cone systems that are in the building. We've placed some new roofs over top of them. We've removed rusted material and replaced it with new beams and structural members, and we've repainted everything, all of this on our own, so...
Yeah, so those are different kinds of infrastructure changes. Just, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We will declare the public hearing closed at this time, and is there a motion to move this from the first to the second reading?
I would move this from the first to the second reading.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. Discussion, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have an ordinance to rezone from a B1 to a R3 multi-family residential. Kevin, can you bring us up to speed on this project?
Yes, Your Honor. Uses surrounding the area of 200 East Briggs were found to be compatible with the R3 zoning, and Planning and Zoning Commission has found this movement to be in order.
Okay. Could I just ask, I wasn't aware of this, but, okay, that's like Briggs and B Street?
200 East Briggs Avenue, right at Briggs and B.
B.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I just was curious, what was the intention to go from B to R?
Is the property owner here this evening?
I don't think they are.
Okay. Does he own R building?
Is it the R building? No.
No, it's R1. Another block north.
They wanted to change a portion of it to an R use, and it was a B1 who wouldn't allow for it.
They want to create a residence there instead of a business use.
Use it more for residents instead of business, yes. And so, in B1, it wouldn't have not have been possible. But it was a comparable use, a compatible use to surrounding area. There were R3s in two, I think there's R3s in two different corners there.
I don't have a problem making R3, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of the property specifically in question.
I think it's a house that was used for a trading business.
Yeah, I think for a while.
Now, it's been sold. It was Edward Thomas Company, I believe.
And they want to bring the, they want to bring the housing to the...
As a residence, I believe.
Yeah, they want to bring it to the lower level.
Right.
We need more residents, which you cannot do in B1.
Well, there is, and, you know, it's interesting, is there is that kind of a conversion going on on the square, where a lot of upper-floor areas that were once, offices are now being returned to apartments, so there's, I think it's healthy for the square area.
It is, and on a trend level, I think, Your Honor, what you're seeing is, you know, a more of a demand for housing rather than commercial use of some of those older structures, it being quite a bit of a challenge to change some of those over to commercial use.
Now move for approval.
Not yet.
Oh.
This is also a public hearing.
I like that, I like the spirit of that.
I know it's getting late, sorry, John. Anyway, this is a public hearing, we'll open at this time if there are any, any discussion items regarding the request for rezoning. If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain John's motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Hammuss. Again, this is moving from the first to the second reading. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Move on to third and final reading of our tree planning ordinance. We had some amended language that, that was inputted last time, and we just gave this two-week period for any more public comment. Have we received any additional public comment regarding this, this ordinance? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. Yes, Mr. Ledger?
Joe Ledger, I was here at the last meeting and asked you to postpone it till tonight, and I heard no comments, response, or anything, so as far as I'm concerned, it's, everybody seems satisfied with it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you're representing the Farm Bureau interest?
The Farm Bureau, yes, yes. Again, I want to reiterate, you just need to educate the public on if you're going to use chemicals and stuff, just need to do some education.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And to that point, we have pesticide expert from ISU and people from the Iowa Department of Ag also coming on May 15th to give a talk at the Public Library, and I'm going to hopefully get FMC to film that so we can rebroadcast it, but it's educational in nature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Now, we'll close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion to pass the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hammuss. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. All right, and this will be the third and final reading for our new utility account procedures and policies. Kevin, any, any public comments that we've received on our proposed changes?
We have none, Your Honor.
Okay, open the floor to public hearing regarding any comments. Now, declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion to pass from the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. City Attorney John Morrissey?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, Kevin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to thank the City Council for the opportunity to serve such a special and exceptional community. My family and I have made many good friendships here in Fairfield and will cherish those friendships for the rest of our lives. I would also like to thank the City's department heads, the city engineer, and the city attorney for what, for their great help in what I consider a very productive and successful administration. I'd like to thank the citizens of Fairfield for taking in my family and I the way you have, and for making us feel at home during our time here. We will always think of our time here in Fairfield with fondness and with a smile on our faces. Lastly, thank you, Your Honor particularly, for your help and your friendship, and I wish good luck and fair weather, most particularly fair weather, as a plague, to the city of Fairfield in all your future endeavors. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kevin. And so, the action that we are taking right now is something that was concluded in a special session last week with Kevin Flanagan, our city administrator, who is tendering a resignation at this time. And we, I think at that time, although we couldn't come to an agreement on several items, we, I think, all felt unanimously that your contribution to the city was something that moved us forward and that you personally and your family were warm and engaging and some, something that we all enjoyed getting to know and being a part of, and we wish you also the very brightest and best in your future, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. John?
Essentially, the council should authorize you and the clerk to act consistent with the settlement summary, and there will be some documents that you are authorized to execute, but this will be officially what becomes our public record on this.
So, yeah, essentially, a resolution accepting the resignation and the summary settlement documents.
Yes.
Great. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Hammuss.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, council, we have a proclamation that I'd ask for your approval on. It is National Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through 19th. We appreciate that the, the role that they play within the community in serving our first responders and our citizens within the community. I know Chief Harvey is very appreciative of that part of the, the job at the Law Center, so I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation declaring April 13th through 19th National Telecommunicators Week in Fairfield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hammuss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Just briefly, council, I also wanted to report that John Meyer for French Renniker and I attended the DOT Commissioners Meeting last week and presented to them a proposal for developing half a mile of three-lane road from Fillmore to Libertyville Road, which would include a roundabout for traffic calming. And this is approximately about a $3.6 million project. John, did I get that right? Is that the total?
3.8.
3.8 million-dollar project. This was at Honey Creek Resort, and the Commissioners have, were in the region, they toured the area that we were going to be presenting to them the day before, so they got a firsthand look at that corridor and how congested it is and how narrow it is, and some of the safety concerns. You know, John did a very, very good presentation on our remedy for that, which would be this three-lane calming. The $3.8 million project, I believe, when we put together both grant monies that we already have approved for trails and also our SDP funding going out several years, we had about $900,000 of that. Then there was about another half a million dollars to $600,000 that the DOT had somewhat indicated a pledge towards their resurfacing and repair of that area, which would leave about a $2.3 million gap. So, our request to them was to partner with us on a project and fill that gap of $2.3 million. The good news is, we followed a request by another organization representing the Highway 3063 corridor that was asking for $100 million, so we sounded pretty good following them. And, you know, they were looking for ways to participate with communities, and all of the Commissioners expressed interest in pursuing this project, so we will continue to stay in touch with them and hopefully be able to get the dollars to do a project like that, which I think would be excellent for our entryway on South Main. That's everything I have to report. We'll move to our committee reports, public safety and transportation.
We met on March 26th. I'd actually been hoping these would be under action items. I hope we can act on at least the Fair Fest request. And they had several items on their list that we talked about that evening. A couple of things kind of got tabled, the banners and the camping, the banners, it was discussed, that there was no good way to connect them, to run them over the highway, so they were going to place the banners on the side of the Von L Building for the Fair Fest. So that was tabled. Camping, they were talking about kind of wanting to use some city parks for camping. We discussed that a little bit, but they've decided to look elsewhere for camping areas to use, and if they cannot find enough locations, come back at a later meeting and try to figure out some other means or way to do that. We did talk about the road closures. They gave me a map, I don't think there's any other copies right here, but basically we discussed closing different roads at different times. Hempstead between the alley behind the Sondheim Center and over to Court Street would be closed Thursday at noon to load in access for the equipment. They actually talked about only closing it partway down Hempstead, but it's one-way street, so to not close the rest of the way would, would be not a good idea. Then the section of Main Street in front of the courthouse, about a half a block there in front, between the Sondheim and the courthouse, be the north half of that block, closed Thursday at 2:00 a.m. to set up the main stage. Then the other areas will be closed at Friday at 2:00 a.m. would be the rest of Main Street from Broadway to Hempstead and on Briggs from the alley in the 100 block of West Briggs clear over to Court Street. Once again, discussed closing just half of Briggs in the 100 block, or, sorry, the 50 block, but that would do no good because there'd be no way to get in and out half of the block, so closing Briggs clear to Court Street at that time. And then, directly north of the square, closing off one lane of traffic in the parking stalls directly adjacent to the square, leaving an extra lane, two lanes open at 2:00 a.m. on Saturday for the on-the-square venues. The committee approved all those closings of those streets. They also had a music request. They requested music Friday and Saturday night until 11, or correction, until midnight and Sunday night until 11:00 p.m. The committee felt that was okay also on those times and approved that. The last item they had requested was the Beer Garden. The Beer Garden would be in the 50 block of West Briggs. Would be all the regulations, the licensing, and the fencing, the security would all be in place, just as it was for RagBri, the same basic people running the Beer Garden. As long as all that took place, we were in favor of that and approved that also, and the police department had no objections. Chief Harvey was not there, but Captain Thomas was there. Any other comments you have on that, those?
The only other concern is if you're going to get 5,000 people, we've discussed this before, if we have to bring in additional officers, that will be at your expense.
if we have to bring in additional officers, that will be at your expense. It's the same as RagBri. RagBri paid for the additional manpower.
And had-- when will that be-- the decision be made? Just during--
I think what we're working on is figuring out when he has headliner bans. I think Friday night's going to be probably your biggest-- he's looking at bringing 5,000 people into town?
When is Los Lobos?
Friday night.
Friday night.
Also, the Klezmer All-Star Band that came last year, the main person, will they come back? And so, he's going to kick it off with Mike Dillon, so it's going to be a good Friday, but Saturday's strong, too.
But Saturday, the weekend, the headliner was going to build up and keep the crowd in town for the weekend.
Got it. Okay. I'm sorry.
(laughing).
I just mumbled. So, Tony, then--
It's published, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks. So, you make a recommendation as a package for all of those--
I make a motion to approve this package for Fair Fest, for the weekend, for the iron letters discussed.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Hammuss, second by Hallie. Discussion?
And I'll just make a comment, and because I don't want Dave Neff to feel bad if I would vote yes, so I'm not going to vote yes, James. I'm sorry. I always object to the Beer Garden.
We heard.
I'm sorry.
We heard.
But I completely support your event otherwise, but I will vote no.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Revulinski?
No. (laughing).
Okay. Is there a property committee report?
I have--
Yes.
Yes.
Property committee--
Well, I'm sorry, Martha, I apologize. I didn't realize they were finished.
That was the Fair Fest portion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Daryl had brought several, and I asked these all to be on action item, but they weren't put on action item, so I have to vote on these at a later time or have hearings because they all require signs being removed from streets, which would require ordinance changes. But the list that Daryl gave us that we talked about and discussed and approved the removal of was, there's a no-truck parking sign in the 52 block of South Fifth Street that was put there, and Bob's Texaco was there years ago. It's no longer needed there. We request that sign be taken down. That was per ordinance put up there. There's a weight limit embargo sign on Jefferson Avenue between Sixth and 12th Streets that the city itself has trucks coming into the city shed that are violating that weight limit, the sign, bringing in goods to the city shed and whatnot, and we request that sign be taken down.
Do you feel guilty every time you pass that, Daryl? Is that, all right?
He mentioned there was actually that one person that called him before they delivered because the sign said he could not be on that road.
The sign has remained with all best intentions.
Yes.
Okay.
So, they request that sign be removed. There's also a parking-- we'd like to remove parking from the west side of North C Street between Broadway and Briggs. Daryl advised that causes still removal issues in the wintertime, and we also approved that. And then, removal of a parking sign on the south side of Hempstead, east of D Street, which is a little gravel section of road up by the high school that gets inundated in cars and football games and other events that occur at the high school, and causes a traffic hazard. He's had complaints from neighbors down there, so he'd like that park to be moved on that section. And I think those all need action items taken, so probably put on future council meeting agendas.
So, the sign removal is something that you would propose this evening, those as recommendations also, and Daryl got those, so no truck parking, the weight limit sign six to 12th, removal of parking North C between Broadway and Briggs, and removal of the south side Hempstead, east of D Street, parking as well.
I can't think of actual--
They're not listed as a--
They came in under the--
Right. So, we'll take those-- we'll get those on the agenda for next time as a published item.
They do require ordinance changes, I believe--
Okay.
--on those parking laws.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tony. Anything else to report?
That'll be it.
All right. Thank you. Martha, have our property committee report, please?
The property committee met on March 27th, and actually, there were three issues, but the main issue that we discussed was Scott Tim requested additional chickens that he might raise because he, as we pointed out to us, his location is somewhat different than the ordinary within the city limits because he is really at the edge of the city, and he already had checked with Parkview, and they assured him that additional chickens and some turkeys would not be a problem. So, after considerable discussion, we recommended that it would be acceptable for Scott to go up to 35 chickens and turkeys with the assurance that this is a project strictly for the use of his own family and certainly nothing that he's going to be selling, eggs or chickens. And so, he was very agreeable. We had a good discussion with him about it, and we feel he was agreeable that if there was any problem with this situation, that it could be rescinded. So, the committee definitely recommended to Scott that this would be acceptable. The other two items that were on our agenda were fences around pools, but in checking with the city ordinance, this is pretty much covered. So, also, we talked with Scott Vaughn, who was at the meeting, and there are-- at the present time, there are no expired building permits that we needed to take into consideration. So, that was the essence of our property meeting.
Your Honor, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
I think on the level of how many chickens are allowed at a home, you know, the zoning aspects of that, number one, this may be something that should be considered at least some degree, I think, by the Adjustments Board, because, you know, there could be more people in town that would be interested in having more chickens. I think if that-- I think you may be forlorn if that wasn't the case because your chickens could come home to roost.
Ooh.
Had to get one more adjustment.
Good one, Kevin.
I am serious about the BOA, though.
I know. We explained to Scott that, you know, this was, you know, a one situation only because, as I say, we understand that other people accept that his-- he is not at all close to any other residences, which makes it considerable.
And it's a good thing, and it's important, I think, that the BOA know where the city's subcommittee stands on property.
Because otherwise, 10 chickens is the number.
Yeah. And so, I think it's important they do know where the city stands on the allowance or ideas of the issue, but it might be important also to put that through the BOA before the final decisions.
Definitely.
Yeah, they usually are the ones who recommend variances to city code, right?
Okay. So, Martha, if you would prepare something that can-- that could be given to the Board of Adjustment and then schedule a meeting so that this could be formalized with them?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there is any other business before the council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
By Hamilton, second by Hammuss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Oh, that was perfect.
(laughing).[1785.73]